October 20, 2020, and we'll get underway. Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda. Everybody's in favor, can I get a motion by Councilor Costas? Second by Councilor Pudal. Be it resolved, the Council of Town Niqwa approved the regular meeting agenda for October 20th, 2020. All in favor, carry. Okay, approval of minutes, everybody's had a chance to review those, any errors, any missions? We're good to go, can I get a motion on that? Moved by Councilor Jarrett, seconded by Deputy Mayor Headley. Be it resolved that the Council of Town Niqwa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held October 6th, 2020 as circulated. All in favor, carry. Okay, council reports, anybody got council reports tonight?
Councilor Dope.
With the Spruce Plains Justice Committee, we met on October 14th, and we're also going to meet this week here on October 22nd. So we're actually becoming very active, multiple times per month now, two or three times per month, and definitely showing how this restorative circle justice is really helping to support the community in and around Niqwa, because it's a regional committee, so it's really, really positive.
So is it getting bigger, is it getting better, is it always the same?
More and more pressure is being taken off the courts by justice committees like ours, by taking some of the cases that can be settled without having people just go to jail and become part of the system. Instead, they're able to make restitution and find ways to restore what they did wrong in a positive way to help support the community.
So do you guys always make a decision when they come to you? Or do you sometimes say, no, we can't really come to you?
No, it doesn't always work like that, because sometimes it depends on the case, whether the committee, we decide as a whole if we want to even take the case. So we only get certain cases also that meet our criteria. So there's a little bit more complexity to it, but definitely there have been cases where we've declined to take them.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Anybody else?
The Recreation and Economic Committee has an announcement. I'm pleased to report that we reviewed another application to the storefront improvement incentive program. Myers Norris Panis Office on Davidson Street was approved to receive 50% reimbursement on their project. New foundation flashing, new flashing at the base of the south windows, and removal and resealing of the three south-facing windows. The total cost of the incentive program will be $2,763. This takes the storefront improvement program funding commitment for 2020 to $25,988. Leveraging over $116,000 in local business improvements, there will be a resolution to approve this application later in the evening.
Thank you, any questions, any comments? Okay, anybody else with a report?
From the Protection and Community Services Committee, we're just reminding everyone of the free flu clinics coming up on November, they're from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, November 12th, November 13th, November 27th, and November 28th, at the Yellowhead Center. And some of the changes due to COVID, an appointment is required. And so you would call 877-646-3888, and that's seven days a week. And there are COVID safety precautions in place, but masks are required, and you need to bring your medical health card.
And when we made our appointment, they said, don't come early, don't come late, come right on the right time. Anybody else with a report?
Following up on what Deputy Mayor Headley has said, it should be noted that Prairie Mountain Health is being used as an example by the province when they're talking about how COVID can be, like the curve can be maintained and bent down, and we can do a good job of containing the virus. So kudos to all the residents of Prairie Mountain Health, and the businesses, and everybody in the health fields. You may have seen some councilors and the mayor kind of poking around town, looking at different streets. The council has been checking out different locations, looking at different alternatives where needs need to be addressed. We were at the top of Davidson Street there and going down, looking at different alternatives just the other day. So it just wouldn't necessarily mean something is happening exactly that moment or soon on that street, it's just that we are putting them in the list of priorities.
Yeah, I think that's always been a priority of our council, right? And I mean, now we're getting ready to head into our third year. I think that's something we do want to start looking at a little more closely, the street renewal. And yeah, I think that's exactly what you said, Murray, is we're hoping maybe in this new budget to start looking at maybe finding some ways, maybe get somebody there to look at some of our streets. So yeah, I agree with you.
And also keep coming to buy lottery tickets for their clinic. That's another thing that is used as an example by the province, is how well this community has supported the clinic. And we even had somebody from Swan River saying that they really like what we've been doing there, so they bought a ticket from Swan River, even though they have their own medical facilities up there.
Anybody else with a council report? Okay, we will move on to our, I think we have an EEO report that Colleen, you got, read that to us?
So the topic of business development, there's ongoing needs with the chamber, with High Life and several local players on COVID-safe promotions for our community, such as I'm being safe for, and then you missed who, your family, your friends, or otherwise, the poster campaign, that was actually in the last three editions of the banner. A very good uptake from the community, and the support of High Life has been just phenomenal to actually carry forward the message about COVID and how we protect our community. You know, and of course, leading into what Councilor Parrott mentioned, Prairie Mountain Health for the whole entire geographic area, Manitowoc has been very good at promoting that, but a special few goes to Niqwa for sure, for working so closely and making sure we're safe. EDO crew has reached out to school division to discuss the use of the High Life Back 40 for COVID-friendly physical education and outdoor classroom space. And maybe let our mayor speak to a little event we had yesterday, where we named our multi-use trail park. So basically, whether it be recreation or economic development activities, we're trying to explore all avenues for how we would promote that. High Life Back 40, I guess it's in here, I didn't realize that, so you might have to speak.
Okay, excellent.
I don't know if you may remember, that was attended by over 40 people, this was yesterday. Very good social media coverage of the event, and of course, more signage is being developed for the site. And just maybe someone want to hold that up, this is the High Life Back 40, it's a little park removed from the camera, but sponsorship opportunities exist for the High Life Back 40 for businesses or individuals. Individuals actually can receive a tax receipt for donations over $100. So anybody wishing to donate to the further development of the park, the amenities, the beautification part of it, come on down to the town office and we would issue a charity receipt for donations of over $100. EDO crew attended a zoo meeting with Travel Manitoba and Manitoba Parks as part of the Manitoba Trail Strategy. Highlight of the discussion was the regional draw of the Assisipi, Dolphin, and High Life Back 40 Loop around the Ryan Mountain Mansional Park. The next step is to set up a meeting with Dolphin and Assisipi, and I do know there's a lot of excitement about this, so we're hoping to take advantage of that. The jump clinic that we'd had was very well-attended. Further clinics will be held in the spring, and Niqwa would like to start a kids' mud bike program. Coaches are required, please contact the EEO office for details. Regarding tourism, you will notice the signage has been updated at Main Street and Mountain Avenue, and Wayfinding signage will be created next. And now that we have the High Life Back 40 named in public, some of the Wayfinding signage will also include that. Travel Manitoba COVID-19 grant, Niqwa Tourism received a one-time $20,000 grant from Travel Manitoba to be used by December 2021.
Okay, any questions, any comments? Okay.
Sorry, should have read that before.
No problem. Moving on to correspondence, we have our standard RCMP statistical report for September. Don't think there was anything jumped out at that, unless anybody has any comments? Okay. Finance, September, 2020 financial statement. Everybody comfortable with that, we're going to move forward with the motion, move by. Councilor Jarrett. Second by Councilor Pudal. Be it resolved that we approved the financial statement for the month ending September 30th, 2020. All in favor, carry. Okay, new business. Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Week, Colleen.
Well, so we've received your letter from the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation. Dear Mayor McCutcheon and councilors, the goal of the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation is to preserve and advance the quality of life in the community. The BPCF does this by increasing endowment funds and making grants available for organizations within our community. The community served by the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation includes Town Niqwa, the Royal News Palace of Roseville, Glenella, Lansdowne, and the Langford portion of North Cypress Lightyear. The Beautiful Plains Community Foundation is marking 25 years of community service. During the past 25 years with continued support from donors, the foundation has grown endowment funds to over 3.94 million and distributed 2.4 million in grants and scholarships. These grants have supported many nonprofit organizations serving our Beautiful Plains community. The Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Board would like to commemorate our 25th anniversary by requesting the Council of Town Niqwa proclaiming the week of November 9th to 15th, the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Week. During the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Week, they will be participating in a giving challenge. In the past, this challenge was just one day, but now has been extended for a week. Your donation of $5 is stretched to $7, thanks to support from the Winnipeg Foundation and the Manitoba government. The BPCF will also complete the last three draws of the 25 days of giving, where the foundation has distributed 25,000 in 25 draws of random amounts ranging from 500 to 5,000. It is the hope of the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Board, Mayor McCutcheon and the Council of Town Niqwa will proclaim November 9th to 15th, Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Week, and take a moment to celebrate the success of the foundation, which would not be possible without the support of the mayor, town council, and community members.
Okay, well, it suggests we're all very much in favor of this confirmation, so I'm going to move forward with that. So move by, Councilor Costas, seconded by Councilor Pudal. Okay, whereas the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Inc. has been in existence since 1995 and was established to preserve and advance the quality of life in the community. Whereas the mission of the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation includes responding to today's challenges and meeting the needs of the community now and in the future. And whereas the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation protects and fosters the development of assets including cultural, health, care, educational, recreational, heritage, environmental, and others. And whereas the citizens of Niqwa and the surrounding rural municipality benefit greatly from the work of the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor McCutcheon, mayor of the Town of Niqwa and the Council of the Town of Niqwa, do hereby proclaim the week of November 9th to the 15th, 2020, shall be designated as the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation Week, and we invite citizens to participate in the giving challenge and other activities planned for the week in support of the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation. All in favor, carry. Okay. Okay, we have the storefront improvement resolution in front of us. Councilor Pudal spoke to that, I think we were all in favor of that. So we will move forward with the resolution, so move by, Councilor Pudal, seconded by Councilor Parrott. I saw you put your hand. Be it resolved that we approved the application to the storefront improvement program submitted by Myers Norris Panis M&amp;P for window resealing and new flashing incentive provided at 50% up to the approved amount of $2,762.50. All in favor, carry. Okay. Okay, industrial park land rental agreement, Colleen.
So this is another item from the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation. The Beautiful Plains Community Foundation has been serving the community for 25 years, and maybe I'll skip all that, we just read it. They have been made aware of 45 acres of land east of Niqwa owned by the town that is available for tender. So this is land that we normally would have tendered in the past, but didn't get uptake when we actually issued the request for tender. So similar to the airport farming project, they would seek donations from local businesses to assist with seeding and harvesting of the land. The board is asking the Town of Niqwa to allow the foundation to utilize this land for a fundraiser to grow the community fund endowment fund. The community fund endowment fund is the fund the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation accepts grant applications annually. This year, the foundation received 27 grant applications requesting over 330,000 in financial support. The Beautiful Plains Community Foundation had just over 64,000 to grant out in community fund grants. As community needs grow, it is vital for the foundation to seek ways to increase the community fund endowment fund. It is the hope of the board that you will consider this a mutually beneficial opportunity to help the foundation build for tomorrow, today together. So what you have running is a draft rental agreement. You're going to notice, obviously, some forgiveness and rent for the first year or two, because we recognize there has to be some remediation, not having not anything done with the property over the last few years. We're giving them the ability to clean it up, get it in restorative condition, and then of course, the rents will start to be modified, so leave no difference than the other farming agreement.
Okay, any questions, any comments?
Yeah, we've had this discussion a little bit before about this, and I think we all thought it was a good idea. I think it's a great idea that we can make use of that land, I just wanted to ensure that all parties are treated equally, but it'd be a yellowhead, clearly, a lot more than Beautiful Plains Community Foundation as far as rental charges.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. Everybody's comfortable with that, I'm going to move forward with the motion, move by. Seconded by Councilor Costas. Be it resolved that we authorize the mayor and the CEO to enter into agreement with the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation for the rental of the vacant lands in the industrial park for farming purposes to support their fundraising efforts for the years 2021 to 2025. All in favor, carry. Okay, Plenary Design Engineering Services Park Lake Restoration, Colleen.
So as you all know, we have been declared eligible for disaster financial assistance program. We have had pre-inspection reports on seven of our key sites, and the reports came back to us. The next step in the process, obviously, not to belabor and prolong what we need to do there, is we need to decide what we're going to do with Park Lake. In the recommendations from the pre-inspection by the engineering company, they suggested we actually move forward with full-engineered inspection, hydrological, geotechnical. We need to gather the data, we need to inspect them, see what goes on in the watershed, determine the capacity that we require. And of course, we have to meet Canadian Dam Association guidelines, we have to meet licensing requirements for conservation and climate. There's several hurdles we need to achieve. This is obviously October, we have the winter to hopefully gather all the data we need. And the idea, trying to have the report back roughly about February, so that if we were to start any restoration or remediation, we've already got a plan in place. Once this plan gets in place, we will present it to Manitoba Mercy Measures Organization, get their approval to proceed. They basically, up to this point, have been on board for us to do the necessary work. They understand that we cannot just put a plug back in the dam there and restore it into the condition it was. It was 120 years old when this whole thing started, and Park Lake was created. To put it back to the pre-disaster standard does not meet modern-day requirements. So over the last several weeks, we've been contacted by various engineering companies and firms, some who actually personally came and visited Niqwa, spoke with us, some whom we've dealt with over the phone. And I think based on all the visits we've had and the information that's been shared with us, the recommendation of administration is to proceed with STANTEC and draft up a resolution, hoping that you're in support. You've also met with them and talked with some of the other firms, and if you feel comfortable with that, we are very confident that they can do the job for us.
Any questions, any comments?
I was just going to say, it was nice to see them come out and spend time with us, certainly listening to them, very encouraging. They certainly do know what they're talking about. You know, they've shown their competency in other projects and that, so I think it was a very encouraging meeting, and I think we would certainly want to definitely make a strong argument for them to be working for us.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, just to build on that, I think what was encouraging is that there's a lot of groundwork that's already occurred, and that we can really get working towards a restoration or resolution to Park Lake. And the nice thing is, even ratepayers of Niqwa aren't solely on hook for monies in this project, that this is funded through the Manitoba Mercy Measures, so there aren't no... I understand there is one ratepayer, but in this case, that's being shared over the province of Manitoba and not solely funded by residents of Niqwa, which is important, so yeah, for sure.
But maybe I would just add too, because I don't want anybody else that's called or brought forward or spoke with us to think that they weren't worthy of a project like this either. I think the advantages of having somebody on the ground running already was very clearly evident, the ability to do it in-house, just the discussions we've had already has put us probably two months further into the queue than we'd be if we were trying to start fresh with somebody else. And so, the crew, so everybody that actually called, I think anybody could have done a good job, but we really were confident with this.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think delaying this any longer could effectively cost us a construction season, and I don't think anyone on council wants to delay this any, a day longer than we need to.
No, and I think, I think that's a great part of this, right? I mean, this lake blew up on July the 1st, and here we are, just getting ready to start November, and we're actually, we're underway, right? I mean, we're going to move forward, we have a firm picked, and they're going to give us some really good data by February, so I mean, I don't think we could have been any more proactive than we have been to get to this stage so quickly. So I think that's great, because I think the feedback we've gotten in the community is the average person in the community really wants some type of Park Lake back, and I think we're going to be able to get them a pretty quick decision here and like, forward by one, so I think that's pretty great.
Okay, after everybody's comfortable with that decision, then we're going to move forward to hire a STANTEC consultant, so move by, Councilor Parrott. I saw your hand.
Actually, you've had everybody moving.
Everybody was in the air. Sorry. I just don't want this to happen. I'm just not used to seeing Mayor.
That was recent.
I'll take a second by Councilor Dope. Whereas the Town of Niqwa has been declared eligible for disaster financial assistance following a severe rainfall and flooding event that occurred from June 28th to July 5th, and whereas criteria under the Disaster Financial Assistance Program requires that remediation activities focus on returning properties and infrastructure to its pre-disaster condition. And whereas returning Park Lake to its pre-disaster condition is deemed unfeasible due to the necessity of the current day environmental and regulatory requirements. And whereas, following pre-inspection is recommended that any decision to reestablish Park Lake needs to be based on an engineering evaluation that will identify a strategy for remediation of Park Lake in a manner that will comply with the current day standards and requirements. Therefore, be it resolved that we engage STANTEC Consulting Limited to proceed with preliminary engineering that will premise recommendations for the rehabilitation of Park Lake. All in favor, carry. A lot of big words in there. Okay.
I thought you said you would like community valuations to be exercised.
Okay, all right, I don't have a question. Okay, Public Safety Communication Service Participation Agreement. Is that who's speaking?
No, it's not yet. So as you know, a few years ago, the province of Manitoba went forward with a new public safety communication service system. What that meant was FleetNet would no longer be available to public service entities. So last year, we decided we were going to budget and get new radios. You all knew it was roughly a cost of $60,000, that came into the budget this year. We received our radios, we've actually transitioned more recently to this new system. FleetNet is no longer valid anymore. We now need to agree, and really, it's only just a letter. I just said I would prefer to do it by resolution of council and then just see it in my letter, basically that we confirm that we intend to exercise our option to obtain Manitoba Public Safety Communications Services and subscriber of MSAD in the Manitoba Public Safety Communications Service offer. So this is just an agreement to enter into agreement with the ability to use that system and that we can move forward. So we're already using it, we were transitioned, and we just need to get the documents signed.
Okay.
So just for clarification, these radios will allow us to interact directly with EMS?
With 911, yes. So I think the confusion around that, and just for you, in case there's some that may misunderstand that as well, municipalities to interact with each other as fire department members, for example, they need to have an internal radio system. These are not the radios that do that. These are the radios that connect you directly with 911. As of doing training out there, you're finding some municipalities still maybe don't have that internal radio system, and you'll hear everything they talk about on the air. They think that 911 is part of their team per se, and they're still playing that out that way. So they're trying to work to correcting that. So it's a different set of radios, because we have our own internal radios, so that, you know, our fire chief can interact with his staff on scene, then this is a different radio. This is why we don't need 25-look. We only need the key amount to make sure that we can represent and listen to 911 if we need to. The rest is all internal. So we have thought one time maybe the FleetNet radio would still have a capability of being an internal system, but it does not. So basically, I'm sure there's a use for them, we just haven't followed one yet, or where we can source them out, or how to do with them. So they're in our inventory right now, and we're figuring out what to do.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Okay, we'll move forward with the resolution, move by, Deputy Mayor Headley. Seconded by Councilor Jarrett. Whereas the Niqwa Fire Department has been identified as a public safety entity for inclusion in the transitioning and migration from FleetNet to a new Public Safety Communication Service, PSCS. And whereas the transitioning of the Niqwa Fire Department has recently been completed rendering the FleetNet system obsolete. Therefore, be it resolved that as we proceed with the PSCS system, we hereby agree to be bound by and apply with the terms and conditions of the participation agreement. All in favor, carry. Okay, we've had the first reading, the last meeting on the code of conduct, and now, Colleen, we're going to move forward on the second and third reading tonight.
Yes, well, I'm going to gather you've all reread this again, unless you want an amendment or a change, we have had it in place by November 1st. And then you have to have your training done by May 1st.
Okay, good deal. Okay, we're all good to go? Everybody lumped it? Okay, move by, Councilor Costas, seconded by Councilor Pudal. Second, be it resolved that bylaw number 3205-20 being a bylaw of the Town of Niqwa to establish and regulate a code of conduct for the members of council be now read for a second time. All in favor, carry. Okay, and we're going to move into the third reading, and that's a recorded vote. So again, move by, Councilor Dope. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Headley. Be it resolved that bylaw, that bylaw number 3205-20 being a bylaw of the Town of Niqwa to establish and regulate a code of conduct for members of council be now read for a third time and passed, all in favor. So that was unanimous, so that is carry. Okay.
All right, might I suggest that we send a copy of this to AM?
Yeah, we can do that, Colleen. Okay, other business. While we have a couple of exciting things going on today, and since Councilor Jarrett is always out front there on the multi-use bike park, I'm sure he wants to speak to our grand opening.
Sure, yeah, it was an exciting day. Although the residents of Niqwa and Manitoba, Alberta, Saskatchewan, and beyond have enjoyed the use of the bike park, yesterday actually launched the official grand opening of the park, and really brought forward our partnership with High Life and how they've and how they've stepped forward as an important community member by buying the naming rights to the park. And I think the Back Forty is just a phenomenal choice, a name for the actual park in that number one, the park is 40 acres, just over roughly 40 acres. So it worked out well. But it, you know, it keeps in mind with our rural term where, you know, that back chunk of dirt out behind there it was. And then, you know, so proud to have this and that was part of our community. And you, you just can't imagine how much comment I've received over it over the last few months. And it's just fantastic to have. And I can't wait to see how that park evolves to our first winter and how all the residents and people in the area make use of it going forward. It's exciting.
Yeah, no, it was really exciting. And it was really nice that we had Minister Squires there. And of course we had representation there from High Life and other people in our community. So.
I think one of the important pieces of data that, you know, as we, as that park came forward, you know, we always looked at the park as something for the residents. And then we had Travel Manitoba there and they identified a quarter million people using cycling as a form of recreation and tourism in Manitoba. I had no idea how big a, I guess, a potential economic draw for our community this park will turn into it. And it already has, you know, beyond our expectations. So.
It's fantastic. You keep hearing the word, word, world class, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Having lived on that end of the community, I can say it's just on the weekends, it's just steady stream of vehicles going by, bicycles loaded up like crazy. And a lot, a lot of families, some club members and that, but it's, it's pretty exciting to see. And basically from Friday about 3:30 after school until Sunday night, it's just groups of kids biking, you know, it's really nice to see.
Yeah, it's good. Excellent. Okay, Mayor Councillor Parrot.
I, I just want the general public to realize how efficient our staff is at getting projects going and making the government officials feel welcome. And of course our council and yourself, Mayor McCutcheon. We're getting ministers coming to Nipewa and wanting to come to Nipewa and not afraid to show their faces. They know they're going to be treated with respect. And that, all the things that have been happening, you know, created by council and staff have put Nipewa area in the positive lens of the province and the federal government as well. A compliment to you guys.
Yeah, and to add on to that, I mean, obviously the minister was here just today to, to talk about our new restart 2.1 million?
2.25.
2.25 million that we got for our reservoir up at the water treatment plant. I mean, that's pretty exciting too. I mean, it has been announced before. But just to quickly go over it again, I mean, that is, we know that we're, we've talked about it lots at the table here. We're a growing town. I mean, we're, we are, I believe in the next 10 to 15 years, we're going to double from the 3,600 we were in 2011. And of course, obviously we need lagoons and we got that underway. And now we need a lot more treated water. We got that soon to start. And yeah, no, it was really exciting. It's going to give us the capacity to be twice what we have now. And it sounds like a lot, but at the end of the day, it actually gives us the ability to probably have two to maybe three days of reserves. So even though it is a huge project, it still is, I mean, we're a growing town. And yeah, it was great for, for Minister Squires to come out and to be part of both those events. So yeah, no, Murray's right. We're very lucky. And I mean, I said it yesterday at the, when I spoke at the, at what was called the reservoir, I mean, it wasn't just this council and I mean, it was the previous administration, but I mean, we were shoulder ready for this and we've all had the administration staff and then previous council and this council, we've always been proactive in getting ready to, to be ready for these big projects. So yeah, no, I know we should take a, a bow on this one because it's, it's really great, the two events that occurred here yesterday. So I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add? Oh, yes. And of course, I said at both the events, it was disappointing that Minister Clark was not allowed to be here or Anna Lee, her advocacy. I mean, Ivy and Clark have always been such a strong advocate for our community. And she's always been proactive in anything that we're doing and always wants to be part of it. Unfortunately, she had it running with the centristerries at the latest building and it's put her on the sidelines for a while, but I'm sure in a few months she'll be back and up and running. So yeah, no, we wish her well and hope she gets better quick. Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on to. During the meeting, move by. Councillor Puddle. Second by, Councillor Jarrett. Be it resolved that the council of town of Nipewa do now adjourn the regular meeting of council at 7:40 PM. All in favor?